Go ahead and call tonight's council meeting to order. Going to ask you all to please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Mike Parker with Rivertown Community Church.
Let's pray together. Lord Jesus, we thank you for the opportunity to live here along the Gulf Coast. At the same time, we ask that during these next few days that you give us wisdom as we seek safety. We pray also for first responders all along the Gulf Coast. As they serve, that you be with them and protect them. Father, tonight for this group, that you guide them, give them wisdom as they seek to work and to serve this community in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Lord George, Jesus, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic in which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Parker. Appreciate it. Okay, first item on tonight's agenda, council, I would ask you to amend tonight's agenda to add as item 22, a resolution declaring a state of emergency for the City of Fairhope effective at 5:00 PM today. So I'll entertain a motion to amend tonight's agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of amending tonight's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, that will be agenda item 22, and the remaining agenda items after that will just move down by one. Item number one will be approving the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session and the agenda meeting held on August the 24th, and also the minutes of the September the 1st special called city council meeting. Do you have any additions or deletions to those minutes, council? Any changes?
Make a motion we approve as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
All I wanted to update is that I'll have the budget presentation ready for work session, next walk session.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, public participation for agenda items, if you want to speak to items five through 22 on tonight's agenda, if you'll please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. If you want to address the council on non-agenda items, there will be another chance to address the council at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Okay, seeing no one for public participation, I will close public participation. Council comments? Councilman Robinson?
Admiral Conyers.
Councilman Conyers?
Just that we had a presentation earlier in the work session from the Environmental Advisory Board, resolution they want to present related to the DIAS triangle and some action steps they would like to see us take, and also had some cleanup of their bylaws. So those were both covered in the work session, no additional comments.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, a couple of things. I want to thank Eric Cortinez and his collaboration with Baldwin County Home Builders today, getting information out on what to do to secure construction sites and keeping drains clear so they drain properly during the heavy rains. And also thank Richard Johnson and Public Works for the great job they did placing an anchor down along the sidewalk there right before the American Legion. Looks great. Thank you, guys. And be safe. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Brown. Councilman Boone?
Yeah, just want to say everybody be careful next couple of days with this storm coming in. Just be real careful and stay close to home.
I want to address, just for a moment, we're coming up, the mayor's going to be presenting the budget, so I want to just go over that for a moment. The mayor is responsible for putting together the budget. The council has several options to adopt the budget as presented by the mayor, to amend the budget or create their own budget. And typically, the correct answer lies in accepting the mayor's recommendations and maybe massaging the numbers some. So I do want to urge the department heads as you're going through the budget and putting together your needs that I do believe we're going to have some delayed, I believe we're going to have some delayed, maybe negative impacts to revenues due to COVID-19. So please be very, very conservative in your budgeting, and I would recommend that we reduce our revenue projections even from last year. We know that lodging taxes are going down. I don't know exactly how much sales taxes are going to go down. Property taxes probably won't go down because I don't think valuations have gone down, but I'd ask you to be very conservative. And the other thing I would ask the staff to do would be to, when we, when the council approves positions that need to be filled in the budget, to make sure that we hire qualified individuals, that they meet all of the necessary requirements, and then if they don't, and you think that you need to change the requirements, to come before the council and ask to change the job description and not fill a position with, a position with unqualified candidates. We, and why do I bring this up? Because we had a situation recently where it looks like we had put out a job rec and we didn't get any qualified, fully qualified candidates. And so the question came up is whether or not that position could be filled, and I spoke to Councilman Robinson, go to him often on these things because he's an attorney, and we discussed this and felt like it was best to hire people that meet, meet the qualifications. Is that, would you agree with that, Councilman?
I would.
Okay, all right. So that's all for my comments.
I just want to mention that the job descriptions that are being updated will be presented, they're a two-month delay, but those are going to be updated anyway.
Okay, was that the Auburn, was that the Auburn study?
Yes.
Okay.
Really, there's a lot that's going to be changed to be, you're going to have a lot of things that, you know, there's certain things that are required, and then there's certain things that you would like to see.
Right.
And really, that has not been, it's all over the place.
Sure.
So I think that's going to resolve a lot of things.
Okay, great. Okay, all right. Thank you for that update. Okay, we'll move to item five, which is the final adoption of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 1510, known as the Personnel Rules, Policies and Procedures Ordinance, specifically Section 1 and Section 3 regarding part-time employees to all these employees to now work 29 hours or less. This was introduced at the August 24, 2020 city council meeting, and Sharice had asked for questions early. I believe there were none, so I will entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for final adoption. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, will you call a question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number six is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's not to exceed 11,935,000 principal amount of utilities revenue warrants, Series 2020, dated September 30, 2020. Will somebody introduce the ordinance, please?
I'll introduce ordinance.
Okay.
I would also like to make a motion, we suspend with the rules to go ahead and vote on final adoption.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend with the rules and vote on this immediately. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, on the motion to suspend with the rules, clerk, will you call a question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now on the motion for final adoption, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption of this ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And for those of you who may be watching at home, we will be refinancing the 2011 URW in the amount of $11,935,000 at 1.28%. We're realizing savings of $841,000. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Ordinance passes. Thank you, council. Item seven is a resolution complying with the requirements of Section 8.2B of the trust indentured between the City of Fairhope, Alabama and Regions Bank dated November the 1, November 1, 1996, as supplemented. And you should all have that in your packet if you care to read that again. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to comply with the requirements. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you again, Aaron.
Thank you, Kim.
Appreciate it. Okay, item eight is a resolution, the city council hereby authorizes council president to negotiate a municipal lease agreement between the City of Fairhope, as Elisee and Christopher G. Campbell and Bonnie C. Campbell, the lessors for use of the premises solely and exclusively for an access to a 40-foot golf maintenance easement, more commonly described as shown in Exhibit 8. The lease amount will be a not-to-exceed amount of $1,500 per year for use of approximately 2.47 acres more or less, subject to any and all current easements specifically, but not limited to that previously granted to Alabama power. And Ms. Major covered this in detail in the work session, so I'll entertain a motion to authorize me to negotiate the lease.
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll say there, you basically, you know the terms. The only thing I think that needs to be discussed at all, and I think it's going to be allowed, would be that, would be that fence. So there's no, be no surprises there. Do you have any comments, Mr. Turner?
You want to go ahead and negotiate and execute the lease? I haven't heard him catch it on here.
He didn't say it.
The lease is already basically drafted with the exception of that one clause allowing him to put that.
We would need to ask the person that made the motion to rescind the motion if we want to say just to negotiate and execute the lease.
I'll rescind the motion and make a motion with those additional comments to.
Negotiate and execute?
Negotiate and execute.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to negotiate and execute the municipal lease agreement for $1,500 a year. Now, council, do you have a problem with that? I don't, I don't think we have a problem with that fence that they want to build there, right?
In fact, it would be right on the line itself.
Right. Do you have a heartache with that, council?
No, I think, I think it's fine. It's their property.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item nine is a resolution to award an RFP for Program Administrative Services contract for the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources grant. You see the number there, the Restore Act or the Comp Plan Project to Grant Management LLC with a total not-to-exceed fees of $26,000, subject to review and approval by ADCNR and the city attorney prior to execution. This was RFP 6-20. Jessica is still here if you have any questions about that. The grant administrator, owner of Grant Management is here if you have any questions. Okay, if not, I'll ask for a motion to award the RFP.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to award the RFP to Grant Management. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Thanks, council. Item 10 is a resolution, the city council hereby approves the following recommendations from Cobb's Allen, along with the city treasurer, Kim Kreutz, for our stop-loss carrier and the RX carve-out, our prescription drug carve-out. The stop-loss carrier changed to Pareto captive HCC effective October 1, 2020, and the RX carve-out to Med-1 PBM effective November 1, 2020. So especially drug carve-out with RX help will go into effect on January the 1, January 1, 2021. Kim detailed us in the work session on this, our, the agenda meeting. Anybody have any questions?
Make a motion we approve as presented.
Second. We have a motion to approve as presented and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I just want to comment, another $1.2 million savings. Kim, thank you. You're up to about $2 million tonight.
Her husband says she needs a raise.
Item 11 is a resolution, the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama hereby rescinds bid number 31-20 for the HVAC parts and supplies for the Building Maintenance and Public Works Department due to no bids being received, and authorizes the city to solicit for informal bids in accordance with Code of Alabama 1975, Section 39-2-6B, and to allow negotiation for the needed supplies and equipment with the current vendor. Well, you have to rescind them if you don't have any, so I'll entertain a motion to reject the bids.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 12 is a resolution, the governing body of City of Fairhope, Alabama hereby rejects all bids for bid number 34-20, masonry and concrete work for alterations at Fairhope Municipal Stadium for the Rec Department. There was only one valid bid received and authorized to negotiate contract with the one bidder pursuant to the Code of Alabama 1975, Section 39-2-6B. Mr. Johnson also briefed us on the, during the agenda meeting on this item. Have any questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay, I will entertain a motion to reject all bids and authorize the negotiation of contract with the one bidder pursuant to the Code of Alabama.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 13 is a resolution, the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama hereby rejects all bids for bid number 30-20, OnCall Large Tree Removal Services for the Public Works Department. There was one no bid and one non-responsive bid received and authorized to negotiate with the contractor or contractors for this work pursuant to the Code of Alabama 1975. And you can read that section. So I'll entertain a motion to allow for the rejection and negotiation with one or more contractors.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 14 is a resolution, Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute change order number one to bid number 18-19, the project number SEW 2-18, the Bayou Drive, Fairwood Drive and Fairhope Avenue wastewater collection and transmission improvements to reflect actual quantities installed for deductive change order in the amount of $92,293.38, and award the change order to bone contracting. So in effect, a reduction of $92,293.38. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to execute the change order. Any further discussion? Okay, there being none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 15 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure work boots for the Public Works Department and the Utilities Departments. The items are available for direct procurement from Centos Corporation through the Omni App purchasing Group, which has been nationally bid and therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a total cost not to exceed $30,000. Just remind everybody that it gives them an allowance of $130, and they are inspected prior to being able to order new boots.
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to procure the, procure the work boots. Any further discussion? Okay, there being none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 16 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to approve an unbudgeted procurement for UV sanitizing lights for use in city buildings to combat COVID-19 from MRSA UV LLC with a cost not to exceed $15,000. This will be funded through the CARES Act, and as mentioned in the agenda meeting, we can submit expenses, including those for the cost of labor to, to use these lights to sanitize our buildings.
Make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve the procurement?
Second.
All right, that's a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 17 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure annual fire extinguisher inspection and maintenance for the City of Fairhope from Safety Extinguishers LLC with an estimate of $15,000. Entertain a motion to procure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 18 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure the annual renewal of the Qsend and QAlert software licensing. This is for the support ticket system for residents and businesses for the IT department from Qsend Technologies with a cost of $12,089. And I did find out between meetings, that is just a one-year annual update to that, but if you want to keep it going, we must renew. And I did talk to Mr. Montgomery. He said that, that the citizens and businesses are getting a lot of use out of that technology. So I will entertain a motion for the annual renewal.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to renew the software licensing. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 19 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote for the procurement of an IT security consultant for the City of Fairhope, and the service is available for direct procurement from CDW Government through the Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op, which has been nationally bid and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The cost is to be determined on an as-needed basis. So I will pay, I will point out that this is only needed if we need the IT consultant. So there's no amount, there is a bid amount for time and labor, but we don't have to pay anything if we don't have to use them. So I'll entertain a motion for the procurement of the security consultant.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Being none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 20 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote for the procurement of an IT consultant. This will be three years of services for the City of Fairhope, fiscal year 2021, 2022, and 2023. The service is available for direct procurement from the CDW Government LLC through the Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op, and it's already been nationally bid, therefore we do not have to let it out for bid. The cost will be $218,161.80, which covers three years of consulting. And this was discussed at length in the last meeting, so I will entertain a motion for the procurement.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item 21 is a resolution that the compensation and job classification plan along with the grade order sheet be amended and approved to add the SCADA technician job position, the job description and a pay grade of 25. And following a discussion with Mr. Allison between the meetings, he'd like to address the council, so I appreciate you bringing that information to our attention.
Thank you, council. This is one of those where the budget, the position was budgeted for and approved during the last budget cycle, but the job description was not, so we went to go fill it. We figured out that the job description hadn't been approved. Just so you guys are aware of moving forward, the SCADA tech, you know, SCADA is our eyes out into the system, the water system, the wastewater system, electric and gas as well. And moving forward with our Public Service Commission issues with the gas department and the Attorney General's suit with ADM, this position is mentioned in both of those responses because it's going to give us better control of our system in the future, and it's going to let us see what's going on with the system. So we were actively trying to fill this position. The HR director and I have found some other places to advertise it and get some qualified applicants in to put in for it. So I would appreciate if we could approve the job description, keep it in the budget moving forward, because we have mentioned this in the response to the Attorney General and to the Public Service Commission as one of our mitigating things going forward is having better eyes on our system out in the field.
And as I mentioned in my comments, so, you know, if you need to go out and expand your search and you need to get with HR and you do that, I think that the council will be very amenable to you doing that anytime you need to do that.
Yeah, and Sharice and I have done that. Last time it was posted internally and indeed, and she has a couple of other sources that we can go out and look as well. I did also want to mention that the, it was budgeted at the midpoint in the range, and I would ask you to consider going ahead and budgeting, you know, the full range of it so that we have a little bit of flexibility if we get a qualified applicant.
You know, there's some question, what he, what he's pointing at is, you know, sometimes in the budget, there's just a number, and I believe although there is a number, I believe that the council does recognize that the mayor and the staff does have the ability to hire within that pay grade, that range of that pay grade. So if, if it makes it better, you know, you know, it's already budgeted, you could say and allows the position to be filled within that pay grade of 25.
Pay grade 25, yeah. So, but I just, I did want to reiterate how critical that position is to us, to give us somebody full-time, that that's their whole job is to make sure the SCADA system is up and running.
Do we anticipate that that would be a job description that would be altered significantly in the next two months?
No, SCADA tech is pretty SCADA tech.
Probably not even in the study.
Yeah, it's, oh, with the, with, I, no, I don't anticipate anything because the SCADA tech here does the same thing as the SCADA tech where I came from as a SCADA tech. I mean, the software may be different, but what they're doing is they're making sure that this device in the field talks to this computer in the office securely.
But all the positions in the budget were in the study?
Yeah, but I don't anticipate it changing.
I'm sorry, ma'am, all the positions budgeted were what?
All of the positions in the 2020 budget were added to the study.
Okay. Oh, they were?
Yeah, but I don't anticipate any changing. It's kind of like a lineman. They do the same thing here that they do in wherever. The SCADA tech's the same thing.
Mike, could you tell us what the biggest issue has been with finding someone to fill that job?
Um, in my opinion, the pay grades. It's, it's the same thing we run into with quite a few positions here when we go out and try to compete outside of the South or lower Alabama with our immediate neighbors. You know, we're looking at, I don't want to get in specifics because if somebody sees this and they apply for it, they might know a number, but we've typically been a little bit lower than what the national competition is for that position.
Well, is that, is that something that would change by, in the compensation study that we're waiting on?
I think this is mainly looking at the job descriptions and the rules, and they were going to leave that second piece up.
The grade study.
Yeah, and so, but I don't, you know, I can't move this higher because then it starts to affect, you know, other levels of people in management then.
But to that point, should we wait until we get the comp study and then include it in the next budget cycle instead? I mean, I know it's a keep.
I think when we get the, the comp study back, there are going to be a lot of things we're going to have to look at as far as recommended, you know. I think there are going to be some that probably are a little too high, and then there's going to be some grades that are going to be recommended at a higher pay grade. I mean, it's just something you're going to have to look at and make a decision on. I mean, it's just something you're going to have to look at and make a decision on. Even if it's, if it's not something we change immediately, at least that's, you know, that's what we need to be.
But I think going out to a bigger audience, if you look at the job description, I wrote it for a bachelor's degree in two to four years of experience, and that's kind of somebody that's really just getting started into it. So I think actually the pay grade is, is okay for that level of experience. I wouldn't expect to get somebody with 10 or 15 years of experience to come in here at that pay grade. So, and as this person progresses through their career, you know, that might be something a few years down the road, if they're doing really well, we could address it then. But I don't anticipate their duties changing whatsoever.
Any other kind of questions, counsel?
I would, you know, I'm a little bit torn over if we make a motion to approve it. It's already been, it's already in the budget, it's in this current budget, so the funding is there for it. But if you want to eliminate any doubt, if you make the motion, you could say, and, you know, the pay would be within the range of grade 25. If you don't want to fund it, then you would have to make that part of the motion. But I'm a little concerned based on his information that, you know, it's been mentioned in the ADM and from the AG, the specific position has been mentioned.
Yeah, the features of our systems, you know, it is a proven labor-saving tool. You know, we don't have to have people out there checking all these things so often, and we can have the SCADA monitoring it and telling us and giving us those reports and, you know-
But somebody's monitoring it now, right?
Um, for what we have, we have three different systems, and we have, don't really have anybody dedicated to any of them. So it's kind of piecemeal. This person would be tasked with pulling it into one source and one tool and letting us have one app on our phones or remote login or whatever to be able to look at the system, a water system or the electric system, whatever.
But don't you monitor yourself, the electrical system?
The electric, yes. Electric, we've got pretty good monitors at the substations. We actually have some devices in the field now that we could actually put on SCADA. We haven't, because we haven't had anybody dedicated to SCADA. We have the mission system, which is a cloud-based thing, and that's kind of working in conjunction with some of the surveillance tools that are on the same system as the electric department, and those are hit and miss at best, because again, we don't have somebody dedicated, that's their full-time job, is taking care of that SCADA system.
And so is the wastewater supervisor not tasked with monitoring the wastewater SCADA system?
They are, but the, but it's, if they're not running, how do you get them to run again? That's, that's what the SCADA tech does, is he makes sure that everything's up, everything's communicating. We've had a huge issue with communications in the past on some of the things that are on like cell versus RF and other technologies, and again, that's what this position would be focused on. So this, so yes, the waters-
When it's up and running, are you telling me right now that sometimes it's not up and running?
Um, anything mechanical is going, anything mechanical or electrical will have issues, yes. And you can get a tree getting in the way of a communication path.
Right, it can go down, but it's not, not like been down for three months or anything like that.
No, no, no. No, we did have one issue on the electric side, took us a little while to repair because we had to get parts in, and that was kind of, you know, as, as the electric superintendent had time trying to fix it. But again, he had a whole bunch of other things to do other than just dealing with the SCADA system.
Mike, as, as far as, and I understand the urgency behind this, and I understand that these, that this position has been included in the responses that you discussed, but I'm imagining that we included in those responses that we were working towards getting a SCADA technician as opposed to that we already had one.
That's, that we were actively pursuing hiring.
Yeah, and so, and so my thought is, I mean, in, in order for that to carry more weight, it would be more important to make sure that we get someone who we think is the best person for the job, and whether that's with a different pay grade. You know, I'm just, you know, I understand the need to fill the spot, but I'm, but I'm more concerned with, based on how, your explanation of how important this person is, making sure that it's the right person and the best person for the job.
Correct, and then Charisse from HR and I have talked about that, and I think by expanding that target audience for the applications to go to or the posting to go to, we will be able to get that person.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, but as, you know, with the caveat that we, we find someone with the appropriate qualifications that we think truly can do this job in the way that we know that we need it done.
Yes.
Would you also add to your motion to, to, with pay within the grade, the full range of grade 25? Instead of a number?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fair.
I just think they wanted clarification. I always thought it was understood to be that, but if we wanted to clarify. Okay, all right. So there's a motion to adopt the job classification plan and the grade order sheet, to add the SCADA technician job, fill the position with all the requirements in the aforementioned document within the range of the pay grade of 25. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next item was the resolution that was added, and I'll read the resolution. This says, whereas Governor K. Ivey declared a state of emergency in the state of Alabama effective Monday, September 14, 2020, which was associated with Hurricane Sally with the potential to make landfall in or near Mobile and Baldwin Counties, and whereas the city council of the City of Fairhope hereby declares a state of emergency within the City of Fairhope effective 5:00 PM, September 14, 2020, due to Hurricane Sally within the meaning of the Alabama Code, Section 39 dash two dash two E, and whereas the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and attest respectively all contracts determined to be necessary to meet the emergency without public advertisement pursuant to the Code of Alabama, and now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, while in regular session on September 14, 2020 as follows, the city council of the City of Fairhope hereby declares an emergency effective 5:00 PM, Monday, September 14, 2020, associated with Hurricane Sally with the potential to make landfall in or near Mobile and Baldwin Counties, hereby authorizes and directs the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest respectively all contracts deemed to be necessary to meet this emergency adopted this 14th day of September, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the declaration, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Public participation, if you want to address the council for any non-agenda items, you can come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Francis Rip, 22985 High Ridge Road. I have not heard anything from the council, the city, or anyone on the Breland lawsuit. As I understand it, just like years ago in the Triangle lawsuit, the city now is going to have to pay for the law fees of that case. Again, like in the Triangle, you know, we were told we would never pay any law fees or anything. The Triangle case resulted in the insurance company dropping us, which we are still blacklisted with that particular company. That's why we're not insured with them now. So the Breland case, I did not hear an amount, I did get this from an attorney, but I didn't hear the amount. What are we talking about? This, this case has been going on 10 years. This could be a half a million dollars or more. Do any of you know anything about it?
We don't discuss litigation.
No, this is final. You don't discuss what the city's going to be billed? We're going to be billed this amount. Same thing with Kane O'Rear, remember when he held his hand up, looked at everybody and said, "You're not going to pay anything"? We ended up paying $3 million? Well, we're paying this on the Breland case, and no one knows anything about it, hadn't been reported or anything. The case is in the Supreme Court. If you lose that case, it's going to be bigger than the Triangle. So you better say a little prayer for that. The other thing is on May 28th, 27th, I think, the mayor and I were asking the city attorney when he was going to file charges on the McSherry case. He informed us that we didn't know the law, we didn't know what was going on, and we were speaking out of turn. So I'd like to ask the attorney now if those cases, if that case for assault has been No answer? You know, the police did their job and arrested him. Where it failed was in court. This woman was assaulted. This is the fourth assault by this man that's running a bar. I don't know how long you're going to continue doing this, but the assault charges have not been refiled. I am not an attorney, and I don't know, but I would like to hear from the city attorney yes or no if those charges have been reinstated. Mr. McDowell assured us that he was going to do that. The 28th is the end of the statute of limitations, as I understand it. If it's not filed by then, then the assault charge becomes moot, and anything that happened to the victim just happened to him without any justice whatsoever. You're the city council, you're supposed to be looking after the citizens of this community. This woman was assaulted in a public place on video, and you haven't even brought a charge against her. You're not going to answer? If it happens again, you're going to answer, I'm going to tell you that.
Is there anyone else? Okay, there being no one else, all closed public participation for non-agenda items.